I am amazed at the people that drive our streets. And ladies, I don't want to be mean spirited towards you. You are so good at what you do. Driving, minister? Standard shift. And they get every hands-free standard shift. I don't know how women do it. But oblivious to the world around them. The world can end. I'm just putting on this little ivy thing. And I'm saying the world around you can end. You have to pay a little attention to your surroundings. Particularly evenings, very early mornings. You have to pay attention. You know, if you're driving in this car and your tail is bent for... Every corner, "Come on, come on." If your instinct tells you something's wrong, something's wrong. So just act normal, turn into the police college, turn into a police station. Turn into a service station and pull right to the pump. And do a little better than that. Keep that car in mind. What did I say? Do? Call it in. Call it in. You save somebody's life, you fall an armory. Please, I say, call it in. So practice safe routines. I'm gonna wrap this up now by saying. Huge, take responsibility for yourself. It's so easy for us to point at everybody else on what they're doing wrong. And you just want this little taste of red wine. You're never harmless, folks. And if you're not quite, you know, scientifically on the taste of red wine in your stomach, you say, "Go on, drink." Don't take that drink if you're gonna drive. That's fun enough. Fun enough. But you say, "I'm really bored. I'm really drunk. Go on, drink." It's about the example. I'm not saying that you have to drink. I'm just making a point. You'll be amazed of the things we do and then we try to explain it away. You have to take responsibility for yourself. I do not let enter my vehicle unless I buckle up. Because I'm saying I can ask other people to do what I want to do. I can ask my children and my wife if I don't do it. And then when I buckle up, I look over and I says, "Kim? Buckle up." Backseat? Buckle up. No one's gonna point finger at daddy. In the police car, the official car? It's Maki. We have this little thing going. I said, "Kim, you buckle up?" "Yes, sir." "Baba, you chief?" I said, "Buckling up now." Buckle up. Have to set the example. Simple little things. Take responsibility for yourself. If you're in a job environment, if you're in a home environment, I know this sounds terrible, but I have to say it. And your attitude is, "I don't care." We should not be talking to you tonight. You're a little far away. Too far away. Because you're not gonna be a part of the solution. It has to matter. I can't just walk away. Let me confess that I'm human just like you. I can leave my wife for the swoop of this thing in life. Young man, let me say this here, minister. Young baby, I wouldn't carry the woman nowhere. Work, 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 work. Soon she stopped running. You don't carry me nowhere. I said, "Girl, I'm working out of bed all the time." I love her like crazy. She loves me like crazy. Never had any doubts about it. Beautiful little baby laying in the bed. And the poor child just wanted me to carry her for a little drive and take off. But my whole life is work. Working this police thing got my company consumed. No work, no balance. So the next night, she decided, "Okay, I'm gonna put on my little tight jeans." And you know you're never gonna make your own bed. She found her tight little fitting in what she could get because I told you this story. She fixing it. She take too long putting on that makeup. Now the policeman will be coming out because I done suspicious. I come from a school of suspicion. They teach us to be suspicious. She taking pepper and then I smell this perfume I never smelled before. Everything now playing into my hair. This woman dressed up. And I said, "When you think you're going?" She says, "Last time I checked, I was an adult." You're an adult? I don't know how she knew where you're going. If you tell me, it's good. But I don't have a switch to you. There's your baby. Food in the fridge. I know this stuff. You have one guy. That woman tip on the hook, boy, she looking good. I think I... My God, so upset you come back with a bleed. I had a man in this house. How dare? Then it hit me, but wait a minute. You've been going every night. And she was an angry. But boy, I had this... And I think, "Well, I probably don't know this woman." This girl, you know, with some fellow. Why I divorce in this one? My, I walk in the bedroom, I look at the baby in the bed, my beautiful little daughter. And I said, "Lord, I always wanted to stay married." The lady said, "Don't want to divorce your wife." But I ain't for this. The woman go walk, go dress up, see them like, "Ah, ah." I have all kinds of stupid thoughts. People really laugh at the back end of this. The woman came back home and she made sure she stayed until after midnight. And then when she came back, I hear the water in the bathroom running. Oh, this house! That you're really icing on the cake. I'm gonna wrap this up right now. I wanna throw that there because I wanna show you. See, there's a lesson in that. You're not gonna get this, you're not gonna get that. Now that's it. I can't sleep no more. Men can't take much. Can't take much. Okay, first thing we have, we can't take much. More than I would, we can't take much. Boys, I turned my back and that's the most torturous night I ever had. I hear you guys snoring. So I'm thinking, "How could this woman snore?" And I might agree. My girl had a good night dressed. Babies, I go up to fool the baby. "Boy, listen to me. This was really gonna be divorce." We didn't speak to each other for like a week, like grunt, grunt pass. It's real. Marriage, folks. Grunt pass each other. She ain't talking, I ain't talking. And we came, I couldn't wait to go see my mom. Draw what the car Michael road. I'ma say I just fuck it all up. So mama say, "Young love, how was it?" I said, "All right, good." She said, "No, boy, this your mama. What's wrong?" I ain't no daddy. What can't do? I said, "Boy, mama, I ain't this marriage thing working." I thinking like I can't fool that. Woman stabbing head hard. She said, "Tell mama what happened." I said, "Man came get dressed up, put on all this sweet stuff on him." I ain't for that. Come over sweet around me, uh-uh. I ain't, I ain't the kind of fellow, no son. Before me and her fight, da-da-da. The lady started laughing. That's what you laugh now. She said, "Son, Kim was here all night." Say, "I feel so sorry for the girl. She ain't..." I'm telling nobody now. So she can't... So I can't listen, little girl. Now she can watch it as a carrier somewhere. She said, "Little movies or something, man." I felt so ashamed. I mean, I was quite relieved. And I got, but you know, she didn't want, she said, "Mama shouldn't have told me because I was having a secret." And I thought you, I say, the point is, you have to watch that. It has to matter. And you cannot be too quick to just make these decisions and say, "I do not care." We all go through those experiences. I just use that little marital experience to say, however scientific you are, that's life. But you have to care, is the point I'm trying to make. You have to take responsibility for your immediate family. My son doesn't like you to say this, but I have a 20-year-old son. I think he's a good guy. He's a biker, a Commonwealth. Can I? Because people seem to love their daddy and he hates that because he can't do much wrong. Because every time, if he's, they say, "Boy, you love your daddy, you can tell your daddy." And he really doesn't like that. I think he loves his dad, but he has to walk the straight narrow. I said to him, "Mom and I live in this house. We love you. You're not married. You can't come in here any kind of time." I couldn't do it with my mom. Call me old-fashioned, so be it. Love you enough to tell you. It's ungodly for you to be coming to 3:00 in the morning. I don't understand why you'd be that kind of... Don't get you in trouble. How do I know? Got me in trouble. So, "I don't want you to do what I did. Don't come in my house. That guy will go any times." Here's your... He said, "Daddy, midnight, you crazy?" I'm 20. I said, "My house." Gotta respect your mom. That's fucking why you gotta rest, boy, because you gotta go to work tomorrow. He would puff, puff, puff. Point is, we gotta have some rules. I just wanna make sure that when, when I hear of the stabbing and all this stuff at night, that I don't have to go rush to the hospital. And I left him with a final thought. I said, "Look, if you wanna move on tomorrow, I don't want you to go. We're not ready for you to go yet." I'd like to know when you move, you move it out because you're gonna go marry somewhere. Then you have to get into the expenses. But you get upset, daddy don't want you... I don't, I don't want you calling me to say someone stabbed you or someone called me to say you got shot. Because you were at some city club, 3:00 in the morning. I said, "Now, here's my deal." I'm gonna share this because some of your parents might need to say this to your children. I said to him, "If you got stabbed and you don't call me or your mom, you don't have an issue." You all with me? If you got shot and it wasn't to cause no grief to your mom, cause of the beef and go to her grave, broken and desolate, it wouldn't matter. But see, you're gonna call us when trouble strike. And I try to sleep. Sound cold, right? But I wanna rest. You decide, your choice to go and do foolishness in the 3:00 AM or 1:00, you should be in your bed. Then you're gonna wake me and ask me if I could come out of hospital. Why should I? I had a little brother, still alive. My mama last day. I can not love him. Love him dearly. But he's a little different from me. And you know how they say you get a little spoiled? So when he see me, he say, "What's up?" He's not, he doesn't prepare, he's not prepared to work. He says, "His mom be helping make his property." And he don't feel like working, so... He's being happy, but he don't work. So he got himself locked up and they told me they had him at the police station, Mr. Bo. So the, the old lady called me. I said, "Mama, you had a maid this evening?" Did I talk about my child? I said, "No, I don't talk about that." You went yourself a little fight this evening? I didn't turn into that. I don't know what's, how the station look. I'm not interested, minister. Because I told him they want. If you straight up and you don't, you have my love and support. I come into sort you out with that. And there are too many of us who don't take that responsibility. You have to offer good advice to your relatives. You see them going down this bad track? Don't wait for them to get arrested and you cuss the police. If you were not sitting on the wall with a fellow smoking dope, you couldn't get arrested on suspicion for having dope. I had a relative calling me, trying to convince me that everyone on the wall wasn't a bad person. There's one fellow who was doing smoking dope. And they found the dope on the ground. I said, "They found it on the ground where you were thrown by this police car." You just gotta tell me which one threw it. You don't have to tell because I really don't care. The point is, you didn't need to be sitting on that wall. I came off the streets. My granddaddy was at a birth advance age in, in Kel Island. He was about, Papa could have been about 84. And Papa had some rules about how you come to an island house. He had a little touch strength. You know what I'm talking about? That strong? And he had a nail on the back door. And this, this old family island, wooden windows, you go to bed, black dark, no electrification, this, the bone dogs. And Papa would, a nail on, in the door jam and a nail in the door on the inside of the house. And he pulled that door to and wrapped his little twine around. Door lock! It's a family island, right? So, he had this little concert. And, and we, James Harvey said, "We're going." And grandma said, "Boy, you know, your Papa's a funny. Be back at a certain time." Um, you know, we had this little Nassau thing in us, come for the summer. We decided to stretch out a little bit. So when we got back, it couldn't have been, I mean, on the watch, but whatever time they told us, I'd imagine adventure could have been about, maybe 10:00 PM. I'd give it once. So we got to the front door, knock, knock, knock. This was interesting. No answer. Now, I'm shooting in my eyes because you know, it dark and the graveyard in these family islands. And we trying to get inside. My cousin don't like rats. Knock, knock. And then, um, we had a lantern in the house. We saw the little flicker moving, right? So you know somebody up. So the lantern went from the front door. And then that little flicker disappeared and the front door became dark. So we said, "Yeah, Papa up." And he even, he ain't opening this door. So we knew about a little detail at the back. We ran around to the back door, check a little bit. Now I want you to hear this. This is a fundamental principle. That door was locked. And we yank on that door and we break that twine. I don't know if my grandma ever forgave us. That was a fundamental principle. You damaged the lock. The door was locked. I did not open it for you. This is my house. It's 84. That old man started trembling and, and he stood in the door, little white legs showing. He had little boxes and he said, "Get your backside back to Nassau." And I'm thinking, "How do we do that tonight?" And we just wanted some, I'm saying, "Please let the children in the house." She sort of signed off for Grandma. Papa cuss all night. Papa cuss all night then. He was a good eye looking. He ruins, grabs a scripture for us. The next one at the school, he took his mail hopper off and he went and talked about Jewish children and he wrote some scripture. My, I was so embarrassed. He talked about that for the week. And we understood that. You couldn't come in when you wanted to. Give the advice while it's good. Give it over to your community, please, as I wrap this up. Your own community. I'm gonna ask you to do something for me now. For two seconds and then I'm gonna ask some questions of you. Let's assume I turn to you. I'm not gonna ask you to do it, but I just wanna make a point. Wherever you are right now, let's assume I say to you, "This is your house where you live." Stay with me now. And I want you, if you have a sheet of paper in front of you, you don't have to do, visualize this for me. You draw some squares either side of your house. So this is a house to your left. Put another house to your left. Let's go two houses down. Everybody stay with me? That's where you live. That's a house. That's a house. Do the same on the other side. Do you believe honestly tonight that each of you could walk up here and say, "I know who those people are. I know who live in those houses." There's a man by the name of and his wife's name is. They are married. They have two children. The children might be ages. And I can't have a feeling. Do you know? Real issue. Because we're talking about private pension and you gotta get involved with that community, get to know your folks. Because if you don't, we'll be right back here discussing the very same issues. As I'm, okay, we can't figure who did it. They're no friends. Someone I told is right down the corner. Who there? You know them people?
Yeah, they never break down, I think, the turn those down there.
Them people? Your corner, your neighborhood. Very simple issues. I wanna turn and ask you now. So please, uh, tell me what some of your concerns might be based on where you reside. Do you have any questions at all, any issues at all, any concerns at all? We're gonna spend about five to 10 minutes. I'm gonna ask Mr. Dean to make notes. This is an opportunity if you wanted to ask me any questions, your opportunity to do so. Any question at all. No, not in chat. You may continue to use the taser, but the point is, using that taser is gonna cause you some grief because you're going to be assaulting someone. If I walk up to a doctor, minister, and I touch him, I assaulted him. That taser becomes an extension of you. We're not going to give you permission to bring it in. I understand that question because I see people doing it. People are doing it with a pepper spray, they're using mace, they're bringing in taser and all these variations. And we've heard some horror stories. Uh, Mr. Dean, it's something we need to pay attention to. Now, I will confess where we could have taken a hard line on some of these issues based on all of the things that were happening, um, I'm not sure that we did. All right? For example, um, it's still an offense in, in law to have an unlicensed bicycle. But how would you feel if I stopped a fellow today and say, "You know, that's on the box and and I hope this fellow, and I'm writing him up, protect it for..." You'd kinda go, uh, "Mr. Grayson, are you sure you're okay? All that's happening, you sure that's the best use of resources?" You know what I'm saying? It's, it's on the box. I'm just saying it gets a little tricky. So the point is the diamonds and stuff. Person doesn't just happen, it just take a happening. They have it because if they need to defend themselves, others have you assault. How question is loaded, I'll tell you. When people become fearful, um, they have an obligation to protect themselves in their households. And they say, "Well, I don't want any legal gun." Then they start to explore what might be the next option. And, and so I understand where you're coming from with that. And a lot of people that will think that way are decent, upstanding citizens. But suddenly say, "You know, I just wanna protect, you know, myself. I know a guy who had a baseball bat and he carried this little baseball bat in the seat of..." And I said, "What are you gonna do with this bat?" He said, "Boy, if somebody has..." I said, "My, that fellow got a gun. You foul fool around everywhere." He said, "I can take a swing at him." So, you know, to ease us on. You know, and I see people do some interesting things. And I do recall that he had a case with two, two women. I distinctly remember who assaulted by a man armed with a weapon. Um, because of, I won't be too specific. But, um, he raped, uh, uh, one of the girls, just in a public place. Um, and these girls got to the point where they just got fed up and they sprayed him and they shot and killed him. I think they shot and killed him in this day, but not today. Yeah, we met him later. But he had a good dose of mace in his face and all that good stuff before, before he was shot. Now, he'd already raped. I think he may have raped both of them. But he got a little too cocky in the process. And the girls got to the point where they said, "You know what? Art Dickens, this is a do or die." And they took him on and it's unfortunate that they, they were sexually assaulted, but they came on top. Good, good question, Mama, here.
But I just wanted, um, advise everyone to be on the lookout for a red truck.
Yes.
Oh, yesterday, around 2:50, it was from my area.
What area?
I'm on CD Drive and I just...
Yes, I know the corner.
Of, of Cash and...
Yes, I know here.
Mrs. North.
Right.
Coming out my kitchen door and I saw this red truck across the street under a coconut tree and the passenger jumped out. The red truck proceeded to the CD Drive. A passenger walked toward car. I said, "Let me see where he's going." Then I looked. I thought Donald Thomas was stopping down. I only saw him beating over the wall in my neighborhood of North. I couldn't not to call her. At that time, I heard her screaming, "Help, help, help." She has an electronic gate. She had just pulled in. Gate was closing and pit stop, he had jumped over. I ran out. I didn't even get back at the house. He called her. She called 911. I came out and we had the homeowner, Grove Best Homeowners.
Yes.
Corporate, they came down and covered Cash on the Nassau Street. They were there excellent.
Okay, lovely.
I just want everyone to be bear this red truck.
And if you see it, it's falling in. That's excellent. That's excellent. Kim, you got a note, Beth?
Yes, sir.
And let's push that up to the rocket strike tonight. I'll show them the envelopes. Just do a little swing around and just keep it. What it be like on old truck?
Old Ford, yeah, yeah, you know how the new model tour.
Pickup type. Would it be a small version pickup, a pickup version?
Smaller.
Okay. Like the S10, smaller version. Okay, got it.
Old, you know, I'd be with Russell and I would say, "They may go home now and paint it." Because if, you know, people are running out and yelling and stuff.
I see.
But the red truck and the, and the passenger, they were working together.
Well, thank you for that. You're circulating time. I had a hand from the back. I come right back to you. I see that hand before I come right to you. Excellent.
I suspect that there's a common building across the road from me. And I suspect that the tenants will move into one of the units of prostitutes because of the number of different cars that are in the area coming in and, and just leaving. I don't know exactly what they're doing. I suspect that.
Good stuff. Can we get, um, gentlemen in the back of the room, Prady? I need you all to get us a specific location. Don't allow her in a good way to leave unless you get me put a target, I need a target profile. Now, I don't wanna go to the wrong apartment, okay? So put me in the right door. That's, that's what I'm saying. Don't say, I tell you, if you, if your instincts tell you. Um, I was so disappointed. We came to work on Monday morning and the newspapers, one of them carried the story that we held really bad weekend with crime. I'm so disappointed. We went and we closed down a nightclub and we arrested 14 armed Jamaican prostitutes last purpose. Got no story that they should have told the public. We took them all to the detention center. We shut the club down. We moved with some indictments against people. We shut down that night, three, four clubs. People are wearing no licenses. And so we have to go after these things. And, and it might not be too far off, ladies and gentlemen, because remember now, in the western extreme, we have a place that supports that kind of stuff. And, and, and a lot of these folks have drifted west into nice areas. The point is, the nice areas you don't look at. That's why we need you neighbors to do exactly what you're telling us now. And that's why these meetings are important. We should have these meetings often. Because you should come to the meetings pregging with ideas and things that you wanna say. And you don't have to wait for meetings. I need to make sure you get some numbers to call. Please, make sure you give her a contact, uh, uh, gentleman. So she's got someone she can call. All right? Let's do the same over, over left here. Share that number. Sir?
Uh, thank you, Chief. I just wanna say, uh, Mrs. North lives in my area, which is high on the terrace. And, uh, I have a lot captain for the crime march that was started by Doug McManus and a few others in the area. And, uh, just before Christmas, or a little after Christmas, my wife called me and she saw a red truck and gave it up suspicious. She told me to come home. By the time I got home, the truck had already gone. But half an hour prior to that, they'd broken up and, and broken into hubs right behind them, stole some bicycles. So the truck left the area. They really had to move. Later on that night, I was on patrol with another guy and we chased a red truck out of the area. Two hours later, we saw a red truck in the area again. We chased him out. He wrecked his Chevy half. ASP Wilson, who was a great comrade of ours, who was in charge of the area. We gave him a plate and a look. He pulled the truck and everything, but the truck was in that truck. Not particularly licensed truck, was in his league in the area visiting a friend. But I said, I'm gonna say this. I always see a red truck every now and again passing through. I drive a red truck and there's a couple of red trucks. I, 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 I'm pretty good on the phone, ASP, because
Yes, sir.
And every time I see a different red truck, I give him a plate now so he can run in place.
That's right. That's good.
Run a plate. I must be giving him about half a dozen.
That's all right.
So one day we're gonna come up with this red truck.
Oh, yeah, for real.
So you can't give him one that.
Yeah.
Um, that was, that's the point I wanted to add.
Yeah, she's asking a good question. Is it a bright red, a dark red, or is it a bright red? A bright red. Okay.
And I do drive a bright red truck too.
Question.
My question. My question, I just wanted to add, but my question is, I watch the news all the time. And I watch how you and your comrades fight crime and you do a tremendous job. You're out there battling crime. And I know you got some issues against you. You got the court system against you sometimes. You lock these guys up six, eight times a month. Next week, money, you come on the road and do it again. What, what, what is gonna come up? I know you're fighting crimes as hard as you can and your parents are. But what is gonna become the constitution where, you know, these guys are six and eight bails, a trillion, two armories. these guys are on six and eight bales, a three million, two armed robberies? How, what, what are they gonna do to stop this and make you a job coming out here one day? Because if you're out there fighting crime twenty-four seven, and this guy's back on the road, maybe again, robbing his lady, or stealing his lady.
Let me, let me, let me add to your point, can I give you a question, point? We have a young man who's now charged before the court, try to call his name, his name is Emerson Habb. And if he's your family, uh, you know, I'm sorry, it is what it is. It's public knowledge now because he's on the court dock and he's been charged. Emerson pointed out in excess of seventy houses that he broke into. Now listen carefully. He went east, he came west, all your areas. He went south. We caught him, uh, in the Carmichael area, he dropped a bike and ran, we chased him down, we got to the airport, we got to stop, and I led back. And once we got him, you know, it's, it's kinda like, you got me, he's a career breaker. And he prides, it's like saying I'm a, I'm a good mason, I'm a good carpenter, that's his thing. So he's kinda bragging rights there. So once you get him, and you're not a rookie carpenter, you realize, oh, you got me. Then, then, you know, he's a big guy, then he'll show you how good he is at what he does. But he pointed out houses in us where people didn't even know what they were broken into. So a lot of the files we sent, he said, I'm telling him, here's how I did it. Here's what I taught. Suddenly he a little rusty and he kinda, ah, taking jewelry and, like we talk in TV. And he tell you how he got in, how he got out.
As a fifty-seven year old guy.
Yeah, fifty-two. And from his little kid, it's like. I'm not yet to that fifty barrier, but I grew up as a little policeman. And so I was being a good fellow, and he was running a part, a truck in a bad fashion. So he's aged and, uh, he's not gonna change, that's what he does. He is a career criminal, that is what he does. Okay? And so. Most times, yeah.
Better get there.
And that's the point I was gonna come to. Emerson has been reminded, because there's so many matters. Um, how do you ever plead guilty to anything? He knows the system. And so the best I can do, or we can do is arrest him, charge him, take him to court. I don't wanna put the minister in a bad position, but I don't have a choice. Legislation rests with the minister and distinct with cabinet, department areas. Um, who look at the landscape, determine what's in the best interest, what's the greater good. And so there are times when I should make private appeals respectfully, uh, to where I should make those appeals. And so you, you, you've hit on something. Um, most of the persons that we saw as victims of murder last year. Are people with antecedents, meaning they have been in and out of the system. They had murdered someone and gotten bail, and then they turned up dead. Or murdered someone, received bail, and then they murdered someone else. Uh, the man that I spoke about tonight is, is, uh, he's got three counts of murders against him, three separate bodies against him. I was telling a story of a man who, and attorney was just telling me how he unadvised us. He said, He never saw him in one of his murder cases. Where in speaking to his client, the defendant, who just murdered someone, he asked him to explain, you know, kinda, put this back, what happened? And the guy casually told him that after he brutally murdered this guy, his shirt was all soaked with blood. He took it off, he discarded it, and he stopped at Kentucky and bought a snack, and he ate his snack, and it was just another night. No biggie. So. And, um, let me give it to you straight. We projected crime figures, um, for last year. And I, I saw a headline that screened ten percent detection on. Basically saying police miserably lost and don't know what they're doing, that's kinda what we're saying. Let's put it in perspective. We took a category of stealing from vehicles last year. And whatever you peg that figure at, let's say it was a thousand, you add six hundred onto that, right, we start. Exponential growth. Why? Because there is a ready market to avoid your, what do we say? Gold for cash. So the fellow steals your watch, your chain, your jewelry. In an hour, it's done. And for, for long, it's melted down. And we now have some of them that are referred to as mobile vendors, I was shocked to find this out. Uh, I'm writing a paper now to my, yeah, fellow has a little kid. He is on foot, he has a business license in his pocket, legitimate, that someone gave him. I don't wanna be disrespectful here, this is fact. I picked him on it because he came to complain that the policeman took his gold. Try the gold to the money, here with the gold, they stopped at the airport. So he went to Freeport, took the, the Discovery ship. And he made his trip, that worked, so he said, Ah, that is sorted. So I do the business in Nassau, streetwise, I go downtown, and the word is around, so you meet me on the strip. He opens his little briefcase, have you, any of you have seen him do it? Takes out a little stone, that looks like a little grindstone, he's got some little, uh, vials with fluid in it. Um, he takes your ring from you, take it off. And he would actually scratch it on the surface of this grindstone. Then, uh, if you says to him that this is fourteen karat, he has a little fourteen karat solution, he throw it on there, if she change his color, he's got his little routine. He has his calculator, and he says, Okay, price of gold, hey man, he's got this thing figured. He does this little count, multiply by a hundred, divide it by ten, and he tell you what the price of gold is. Pushes it out of his pocket and give you a two hundred dollars, shake your hand, off you go. Done. And off he's gone. Now, the fellow who's got the two hundred dollars, how do I connect him back to your husband and your daughter? So I stop him and he's got two hundred dollars in his pocket, and he don't remember nothing. It's a democracy. That's totally disconnected. And now the fellow's gold is on his way to Discovery, heading to Florida, to an address in Miami, where he turns in this little block of gold, and he gets, he tells me twelve thousand dollars. No question. And I asked, How long does it take you to get that much for twelve thousand? Man, I saw the tribe pull all the juicy stuff out of him. But he was there to see the complaints and corruption, ground troops, to complain about policemen harassing him. We ran into a fellow the other day with difficult issue. Lots of stuff. But doesn't have a receipt for anything. And I had a pastor that called me to tell me, Mr. Green said, I think you're a decent fellow. I see you on TV, I know you're being well, but you need to solve your offenses out. Because I could vouch for this man. I saw the pictures. I wish I had brought up this thing. Listen, folks, I'm not talking about one headlight, two headlights, hundreds of them. Take your pick. What headlight you looking for, Honda? There you go. What, what, what modern make in here? They ain't no original packages? What family you looking for, what kinda car? Take your pick. No receipts. And, and it's hard when it's our family and our friends. I could account for everything that I own. I have a receipt somewhere or a little paper in a box someplace. Because I didn't want the police to hook me up and tell me I can't account for stuff. It's tough. Good question. Yes, sir.
One of the things that I wanted to mention is something you just touched on. We have a hotline in Kalani where people call when they have issues that need to be addressed.
Yes.
And most of the times it's non-prime related.
Yes.
The one thing that we have gotten that did involve the police, because it wakes me up at two and three o'clock in the morning. Is the noise pollution. What jurisdiction does the police have over that kinda thing? Because it appears that nobody could do anything.
Yeah, we can do something about it. Let me tell you what I've been doing. There's a lot of links in. Even if you have a permit to run a club. Or some other entertainment place. The music must be played inside your premises. And should not affect people on the outside. So if I'm on the outside and it's a nuisance to me, it's too loud. Quickest test. And the police can shut it down, and we can write the infraction. And if you don't have a permit to do it, you know. How, how do I explain this to you? I lived in Ottawa, Canada for a year. Traveled all over Canada. I never, I cannot recall ever driving any street. Where there was a, a party like that going on. In the backyard. You can't do it. You just can't do it. Doesn't happen, folks. You, you can't do it. You can't park your car on the side of the street on no block. I say you come back in a couple of days. It don't, it don't work like that. They will rat you out. And you know, you can't approach it, you're a politician. It ain't happening. And you fool around with it, they take your house.
So that, that is a law that.
Listen, we had an A C unit outside the house. One day the folks showed up. I was the senior policeman from the Bahamas, official. Ran my doorbell, said they have a noise complaint. And I said, What? He says, Yeah, the A C unit is, uh, too loud. The fan. Fellow said that his window on that side was near the A C. And he liked to open his window and he had a cool breeze. And, uh, it was just disturbing him. So they had a meter that came by. And I think it's a testing pulse, they tested to determine. And they said that I was in the. They spoke to him and he was quite happy. But it was tested. Now, we're from Bahamas, so we had a little difficulty with that. Uh, took me a while to digest, but I thought he was a mean person. But then it suddenly dawned on me, wait a minute, wait a minute, that's just to wake things up. You know, you, you, you have to follow some rules. You know, in Grand Bahamas, I lived in the area known as South Bahamian. Uh, some people will misunderstand this, but it's the closest I've ever seen this come to Somerset border. You can't park an old car beside the road and leave it. Your car must be near your garage or your driveway. Your dog can't just run around and do its vicious. Um, can't have cars on blocks. You can't have a clothesline in the backyard of your street clothes, do you know that? Can't do it. Um, you cannot build a house and not have landscaping done, not allowed, folks. You have to put that in the plan. And that has to be done. You're not gonna get that occupancy unless that is properly done. And that's what, and this is in the Bahamas. In the Bahamas. Nice point. Um, it, it's in the Bahamas. And so, so I'm saying, we, we're way off. We're way off. Yeah, 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 but I'm telling you, it does work. Um, the, the other thing though is, I just wanna ask you, and you don't have to give me much details in a setting like this. Your, your CCTV system that you have in.
Just got it sampled.
Okay. So far, so good? Okay, and, and listen, can I ask you to pay some attention on that for me? Here's what happens. The guys get a little wise now, and so you have to pay attention to what happens before. And I'm hoping for Ministry Works, uh, and other technocrats that are in the mix, if you're advising people, I'm hoping you get the point of building in, into designs. We pay attention to, this is the house, so I put a camera that sees the door and, and the house. But remember, the fellow's gonna start from the road. And if he starts from the road, he probably hasn't put his mask on yet. Let me put it another way. Guy pulls into a parking lot, he's not driving the streets with his mask on. It's kinda a rubbish establishment. He pulls into a spot in the parking lot, you have to think like, Hey, what, what might be that spot that he wanna pull? So the driver can, he can hop and pop in and pop out. I see he had some of this when he puts his mask on. The point that he gets out, if he's not aware of the cameras, then he just gave you his face. So most times you get him with his mask on. And we can see everything that he's doing in your establishment around the front door, but he's masked and covered up nicely. And if you have the cameras just positioned directly, and that is why people like Mr. Dean and those who are experts will say. Yes, we know a security company came and they saw this to you, but let's look at this again. Is this community placing for environmental design? Did you build it indirectly? You look at your wall, how high is your wall? Are you using a solid rock wall, or as opposed to going up, uh, maybe two feet and then putting it on rails on top so that it's high enough to cause him some grief, but people can see? Or do you put this barrier high enough that he can be in there all day, but you're up there and nobody from the road will see? Simple issues, shrubbery, how you do it? You love your hedge. But your hedge is a lovely barrier that people hide behind. You can have a nice tree. But the branches don't start until it's what, about five, five feet up? So you set up like a, it's so simply scary. I'm telling you, a bad guy knows that. He looks at you, he looks at the neighbor, he goes, and if he's been there before, he knows your place. And there's a good chance we catch the fellow, it's the same person that's always coming back, because he knows it. Knows it, probably knows you. Scary. Because they watch you. They do. We hear you. I, I really believe, uh, name is over to you for, I feel, a long one.